Good evening and welcome to the City of New Franklin Public Hearing. Kelly, may we give a little call?
Yes. Mr. Cox?
Here.
Mr. Hargit?
Here.
Mrs. Jones?
Present.
Mr. Fetterman?
Here.
Mr. Powell?
Here.
Mr. Daniels?
Here.
Mr. Stock?
Here.
Pursuant to the Ohio Revised Code, Section 929.02, a renewal application for properties within the city limits are in an agricultural district and have requested a renewal application to be approved by the City of New Franklin Council members. The first property is for Tony, Beth, and Charlie at 1693 West Minnesota Road, New Franklin, 44216, parcel number 24-00243. I'd like to make the motion to approve.
Second.
Kelly, may we give a little call?
Mr. Cox?
Yes. First, is there any discussion? Are there going to be comments?
She is.
Tony is present.
Oh, she's here. So.
That's okay. Kelly, may we give a little call?
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Passes 7-0. The second application is for Mark A. Whipple, vacant land on Cleveland Madison Road in New Franklin, 44216, parcel number 2500803. Any discussion? I'd like to make the motion to approve the application.
Second.
Kelly?
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. Are there any public questions? Yes.
Just one question. Wasn't aware this hearing was even happening. Where was it advertised when it was? It's not listed on the city's calendar.
It was advertised February 18th in Akron Legal News.
I have a copy of it, can I have one? I have a copy.
It was mentioned at the last meeting as well.
And Sam, can you reiterate her reading at the last meeting? Any other questions? We'll adjourn the meeting at 6:06.
We have one question, is Mark Whipple here?
Okay. And I think, Paul, you might introduce the gentleman for the proclamation.
Yeah, I'm sure he'd appreciate that, definitely. This is Jamie Harstrom. Jamie is now the, what's your position with that? Director of Legal Services. Director of Legal Services for Summit County Developmental Disabilities Board. Prior to that, he just concluded his stint as a mayor of. So we're, I've known Jamie a long time. He reached out today and is looking for, the board of developmental disabilities is looking for our support. And I'll turn it over to Jamie to speak on that. Where do you come from?
Okay, thank you very much.
I'll shoot over there.
Thank you for welcoming me, thank Mary Adamson. Is this your typical crowd for a council? Usually if we had a crowd like this in Monroe Falls, I did something wrong.
They're all here for you, Jamie.
They're all here for me. I just want to thank the Village of New Franklin, Mary Adamson Council. This month is, March is Developmental Disabilities Month. And we're reaching out to our communities to help them share in this endeavor. We have a partner in the Akron Zoo. If you wear orange on March 5th, 6th, and 7th, they will allow you in for free. We've had some wonderful support from communities to get out the message that if we open up our doors, businesses, and other parts of the community to those with developmental disabilities, it's a win-win situation because we're able to access the talent and abilities of those that might have a disability, while at the same time, they can provide a valued service to businesses and other parts of our community. And this month is a way for us to recognize that and get the message out to give people some opportunity to prove what they can do. So I want to thank again the mayor and the council and all the people for showing up for me. Thank you very much. And I really appreciate your time.
We have a proclamation that acknowledges that in 1967, the boards of developmental disability were created, including Summit Counties. Through the work of legislatures and other stakeholders, including families, community-based organizations, public policy changes like the American Disability Act have been developed to support and maximize independence. So a county board has made investments to support individuals who let residents with disabilities live independently, find meaning from employment. The Disabilities Board has asked New Franklin to join in recognizing March 7th, 2022, as Inclusion Day, which we recognize and support people of all abilities who are maximizing their talents and potentials in pursuing their dreams and achieving their individual goals while making significant contributions to the community. And whereas, this is Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month. It's an appropriate time to recognize public policy improvements, accomplishments in community organizations, service providers, and most importantly, the achievements of thousands of individuals with developmental disabilities who contribute daily. The proclamation reads that now therefore, be it resolved that New Franklin City Council hereby recognizes March 22nd, March 2022, as Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month. In the City of New Franklin, commencing community organizations, agencies, and direct service professionals for their dedication, awareness efforts, and outstanding assistance towards improving the quality of life for children and adults with developmental disabilities. And I call for the voice motion to approve this proclamation. So move. And second? All in favor?
Aye.
And if I can offer this, and certainly whoever else wants to jump in, I didn't really plan to say this, but you know, Giant Eagle is in place, and Acme as well. And you know, a lot of places we shop, we see some of our local employers that are employing folks with disabilities. And, you know, there's a guy, I don't say his name, but I talked to him all the time up at Giant Eagle. You know, he pulls himself into that chair every morning. Unbelievable. And with a smile on his face. And it's just, it's just heartwarming. It so encourages you to see, you know, I get up and my back hurts and I don't complain. It's like every day. But you know, God bless those people that have that fortitude. And God bless the agency that supports them. So, thank you, Jamie. Anything else, anybody else want to say?
Thank you. On behalf of our Superintendent Lisa Kamowski and the Summit County Board of Developmental Disabilities, I want to thank you. And if I can have a personal moment here, I've known Mary Adamson for many years. And I think he's exaggerating with regard if his back hurts, he starts complaining. Because many years ago, he said something to me when I was a young attorney and was having one of those days we all have. And I said, "Well, Paul, how are you?" And he goes, "All the important things are good." And it made me stop and think back. I said, "You know, you're right." And I can't tell you how many times I thought, "All the important things are good." So I will let the mayor know I have used that saying more times than I can count. So thank you.
I want to say something to Jamie. When I was over at the lake one day, I bought a T-shirt. And it's my favorite T-shirt. And the saying on it is, "The way you look at me says a lot about you." That's one of my favorites.
Thank you, everyone.
Yeah, sure. Want to get it signed right now? Want to sign it? You got one, Jamie?
I did, I signed it for him. I just didn't want to interrupt you.
Oh. Thank you very much.
That's okay, then. My pleasure.
Thank you, report.
We're going to call to order the New Franklin Council meeting, the New Franklin Committee meeting. We have two first readings, no seconds, one third in the pending legislations. The first resolution is for, Mr. Fetterman?
So we have Resolution 22R15, a resolution authorizing New Franklin to enter a revised three-year agreement with Clinton Lawn Care and New Franklin Lawn Maintenance in case of emergency. I'd imagine you have a few things maybe you can mention about that?
Well, yeah. My prior resolution in July, and we've, Clinton has been doing mowing for us, Clinton Lawn Care, for 12 years. And they've done a really nice job. And there were some significant issues before we got them, and we haven't had those issues since. And we've been happy with them. And we renewed pretty much on a three-year basis. In July of 2021, we renewed for an additional three years. And we're able to lock the prices in for that period of time. What we're proposing now is adding, they had six locations. We will be adding five locations. That's what's proposed here. And we'd be expanding two of the six locations. And that being, they did a fire department, and now they would do the fire department at the grounds in Miracle. At Sizzler, they only did a portion of Sizzler. Now they would be doing all of Sizzler. Those are the two expansions. The, they estimate about 30 mows per year, anywhere from 28 to 32. And the previous contract was $638 when you added up the six locations. Times 30 mows came out to $19,140. And we add these five additional locations and expand two of them, it comes up to $1,380.50. Times the 30 mows is $41,415. So that would be an increase of $22,275. And the primary reason we're doing this is we used to hire seasonal help in the parts department to do this, and we just can't get people. We've had a difficult time. And what's new? Everybody's having trouble finding workers. And last year, we ended up using one of our service guys to do a lot of the mowing. And that's prohibitively expensive. So we had in the past budgeted, when we use a seasonal guy, we also have to pay overs. We've got unemployment, we've got workers' comp. And so we had budgeted $29,300 for a seasonal worker in the past. So this will cost us $22,275. We won't use a seasonal person. We won't have to pull the service guy away from the service department. We'll save wear and care on our equipment. So we really think by outsourcing the balance of our mowing, that it's going to be a cost-saving force in the long run. And that's so drastic. I have fashioned this as declaring an emergency in the sense that the contract is due to commence on April 1st. You can go to a second reading if you wanted to. But we would want to have this in place in time for that first mow because sooner or later, it's got to warm up and the grass is going to start growing again, so. Anyone on council have any questions or comments about that?
Couple of questions. I think you might have answered the one, but I'm assuming this would take care of all of our mowing then?
Yes.
And then we purchased a mower not too long ago. I know Brian's here, you can probably answer this. Would we still use that mower for anything? Or is that just something that we would keep? What would we do with it?
Yeah, I don't know if there's any other, if there's any ancillary mowing that we would do. We weren't quite as happy with that mower as we would have liked to have been. But we'll hang on to it, Brian, and use it.
Yeah, we'll keep it.
I think your email says like a $10,000, $9,000 savings, so.
Anyone else in the audience have any questions about this? Have you ever had any other estimates? Yeah, we did ask, and we did, nobody else offered. We looked at the local business, the local mowers. They weren't interested. I don't know if we, well, maybe just, the cemetery by itself, I hate coming to that because that was the problem area. We had a ton of problems over the years. And these folks really, really do a nice job with that cemetery. So I would hate to lose them, quite frankly. They've been good. I've heard they called complaints.
And we did have numerous complaints before. And I think we only had maybe one other bidder. And that one was, I believe, higher, if I remember correctly, than, and that was what I was supposed to say, Paul, 10 years?
Yeah, yeah.
I'm okay moving forward with this tonight. Does anybody want to push it to a second reading? I guess you need to. So we'll move on to that. We have a third reading for 22R12, a resolution awarding the bid to Cavanaugh Building Corporation for construction of tennis football courts at Sizzler Complex in case of emergency. It's a pretty.
Sorry, your reading, though.
Yeah, it's a well-spoken topic. I think we have really exhausted most of our questions and answers on it. Anyone on council have anything further to add? Anyone in the audience have anything further to add?
There will be a public input section with a regular, you can talk in the room.
So we will close meeting development at 6:17.
Thank you, Andy. The next resolution is for the Finance Committee. Mr. Cox?
We will open the Finance Committee at 6:20. We have one, Resolution 22R16, a resolution approving and adopting the 2022 annual operating appropriation budget for the general fund and all other funds for the City of New Franklin to be funded in case of emergency. We've received the appropriations and we have a few questions about it. Our finance director wasn't able to be here tonight. So we were going to ask for time. And we met as a committee, the Finance Committee met earlier, looking at the appropriations, the budget, and forming our questions and concerns that we have with it. We asked rest of the council, or anybody else, if you have questions, to please forward them to our committee. We don't want to bombard the finance director with a whole bunch of questions or the same question from multiple people. So we plan to sit and meet with her and set up a time. So if you could direct any questions to the Finance Committee, we can put it all together and try to get those questions answered at all at one time. So, any questions? Yes, sir?
Just one. Mark Sedlec, 5497 Grove. I went and printed it out and was looking at the numbers here. And one thing that seems to be notably missing is the revenue side of the equation. How does that compare with the appropriations you're planning to spend on? You should know how much that comes in. And can we make that public or that information public correspondence so that we can ask intelligent questions?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah, so we have that information, but yes. I understand. And we'll put that out there for you. Questions, comments?
No, I think the Strategic Investor Resources will provide that information.
Right.
And I don't, what I don't know is whether or not that's anywhere available right now on our finance, not on the website. What makes you it is. We're asking for time. There's a lot. It's a big, it's a big.
Any other comments, questions? We will close the Finance Committee meeting. Wow, a three-minute Finance Committee. That could be a new record. At 6:23.
I'd like to call to order the City of New Franklin Council meeting for Wednesday, March 2nd at 6:24. Everybody arise this page. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for its stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Cox?
I have arrived.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Present.
Mr. Fetterman?
Here.
Mr. Powell?
Present.
Mr. Daniels?
Here.
Mr. Stock?
Here.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from the regularly scheduled meeting of February 16th.
Second.
Kelly?
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. Now it's time for the public comment. We give you four minutes. You're welcome to come up because it's so much nicer to be up here. Everybody can see you, and they can hear you well. But you're welcome to stay where you are too. Does anyone have any comments? Yes, ma'am.
I'll come up to my friend.
Yay!
Usually teachers are the ones who.
You do need to give your name and your address for the project.
My name is Laura Lee Daly. My address is 4236 Wickliffe Drive. And I wrote my statement, so I went ramble. In the middle of my fifth grade year of school, my family moved from Worcester to Koshakton, Ohio, where the only two tennis courts in the entire town were located at a private country club. My father felt that public courts were needed to give everyone the opportunity to play. So I led a fundraising campaign, which resulted in the building of six tennis courts on the grounds of Koshakton High School. After the courts were completed, my dad would come home from work, change his clothes, and take me and my three siblings to the courts, teaching us how to play tennis. I competed on my high school team for three years and then played for the women's team at the University of Akron for another four years, eventually earning a partial scholarship along the way. Almost 50 years since I first learned how to play, I am still competing in USTA leagues and playing for fun with friends and family. There are no longer any outdoor courts in New Franklin that are playable. The two courts at Lockwood Road and the two courts at the Covington Play Center are dangerous because they have not been resurfaced for a number of years. If I want to play tennis outside, I have to go to Green High School, where there are six courts, or to East Liberty, where there is two courts. One of them's got a big dividend, so it's not really very playable. Tennis is a lifetime sport which offers great fun and competition for people of all ages and abilities. My father, who will turn 90 in July, still plays three or four times a week. And I have developed wonderful friendships with the women who play on my USTA teams. I would love the youth of our community to have the same opportunity, not just those who live in the Manchester School District, but those who attend schools in the surrounding area as well. The USTA, which stands for the United States Tennis Association, supports communities who offer lessons and instructional programs to their youth, providing grants for the construction of courts and free equipment. I am more than willing to volunteer my time to help with instructional clinics for our youngsters when the courts are built. As a former phys ed teacher at Manchester Middle School and currently as the Athletic Secretary at Manchester High School, I see a great need for these courts. Our high school girls tennis team has been successful for as long as I can remember, and we have been averaging 25 to 30 girls on the team each year. Unfortunately, we have not had a boys team for the past three years, partly due to COVID, but mostly due to a lack of boys who play tennis. The girls on our high school team have to get their own transportation to Barbados High School, whose courts we have been using for the last three years. And students driving themselves and other students to practices and matches is a liability. When I was a teacher, I tried to teach tennis to the middle school girls by having them hit tennis balls against the outside wall of the school or use foam balls and lower the volleyball nets and try to play in the gym. It would be such an improvement to have these courts on the school property, allowing the phys ed students the opportunity to learn how to play tennis and pickleball on official tennis and pickleball courts. I can't imagine how unfulfilled my life would be if my father hadn't seen the need for tennis courts in our community when I was growing up. I am grateful that he was able to convince others that having tennis courts was important. And through his efforts, many people, myself included, were introduced to a lifetime sport that keeps on giving. I am truly excited for the opportunity these new courts will provide, not only for our youth, but adults of all ages looking for a fun, social way to be active. Thank you.
You have coached in the early 90s?
Well, that's a pretty big statement to say that you'll volunteer to.
Yes.
I didn't learn tennis when I was young. I have my eighth child, and I was in my late 30s. And I now play with a lot of people who are in their 70s, 80s, and 90s. So that was something, it is a lifelong sport, even if he didn't start it early. So I think too, that we deserve the court. And I thought that wasn't automatic when we talked about it. Certainly, if it's going to be good, it's going to be there, so.
Annie, can you give your name?
My name is Patty Hercules, and I live at 1715 West Comet Road in Clinton. And we've been here for about 58 years.
Thank you. Anybody else have any comments?
Well, now I've got the nerve.
All right.
My name's Denise Campanza, and I live at 263 South Bay Drive. And we've been in New Franklin Township for 25 years. My mom, who is 89 years old, lives with us. She lived in New Franklin Township for 50 years. So we love the township, and we want to support it in every possible way. And I was an avid tennis player myself, And I was an avid tennis player myself and then got injured, so I reverted to pickleball. And I'm telling you, both these sports are amazing, and they will only bring, I feel, our community together more. What way to get out and do exercise, what more way to meet people, and it's stress-free. Our whole life is stressful with work, and kids, and grandkids, and this and that. When you get out there on those tennis courts or pickleball courts, you just leave that all behind. So it's a wonderful, wonderful thing, and I can't wait to get out there and play on them, and I as well would be willing to do whatever I possibly can to keep them up, to teach. I coached tennis for 30 years myself, and Judy, you used to do my hair.
I have to say, though, that was wonderful, and we do need more people in the community. Unlike you, though, I really think it's going to bring the young and the older together. I can't wait to try pickleball.
Oh, come on.
I can't believe I said that.
Well, come on, we'll teach you.
I'll expect you to teach, and I'll tell you to then.
Yes, yes. Thank you all. Thank you.
Anybody else have any comments? Yes, sir.
Richard Burris, 978 Kurtz Drive. My daughters, Ashley Burris and Ella Burris, have played tennis for Manchester. Both have been very successful, with Ella reaching the district tournament this year in doubles. If you would ask them today if the city of New Franklin needed tennis courts, they would agree. It's long overdue. If you ever needed to find tennis courts to practice on, you can follow the vicious circle we did many times to find tennis courts. Sometimes you drive to Jackson Park, then you have to go to Butler Park, then you have to go to the park on 619, then you have to drive to Kelvin Tree to try to find a court, then eventually probably driving back to Canal Pole and just to find courts to hit on. It's a vicious circle that we drove many times just to practice or hit because we couldn't afford to rent tennis courts. This year, like my wonderful wife, Gabby, said at the first meeting, Ella was involved in a car accident in Jackson Township, driving or coming home from practice, which I believe might not have happened if we had our own courts and the team could practice here in New Franklin. But like the Manchester girls' tennis team, they accomplished more than any girls' tennis team has ever accomplished before. They won their league, they had doubles teamed all the way to districts and win games at the district tournament, something that they'd never done before. They're also returning a strong tennis team next year. It would be great for them to have their own courts to play on. But through playing tennis with my daughters, I also gained a love for the sport of tennis. This is my first year of playing tennis seriously. I play on Thursday nights on the men's league. I play cardio tennis on Saturdays in the morning. Tennis can be played at all levels, whether young, whether old. We have a man on my Thursday night league, he's 81 years old, just as competitive as I am on that tennis court. We have a young man, as young as 15 years old, in high school, freshman, just learning to play with the men, trying to increase his ability to play tennis. So if you look at me, it doesn't matter your size, or your weight, or your age, you can play tennis, you can play pickleball. We have baseball, we have softball, we have soccer, we have football fields for the youth to play and develop into better players in their selected sports. You can see the success from youth sports by hearing, or reading, or watching the successful teams in Manchester. Youth development is important. It would be great to have tennis courts, pickleball courts, so the league could have programs for tennis at the elementary level and at the middle school level. But they would complain that they just don't actually play in their own city and not have to drive somewhere else, or drive the vicious circle that I had to drive for many years just to get my daughters to hit tennis balls. I know the cost is high. We can't afford them. $750, they would take a few dollars, I understand, but I'm sure it was high three years ago or four years ago when it was discussed. If we wait a year or two, might be in the millions next time. We can't wait another year because the cost of goods is just increasing. The time is now. Let's not wait another minute. I believe Manchester Schools said they would help with maintenance. That's a great deal. I hope one day I can play on tennis courts here in New Franklin with my grandchildren. I know the sticker price looks and sounds expensive, but it always will be. But you cannot put on the price tag of all the families that come and choose and live in New Franklin for generations to come because of the great parks and recreation that New Franklin has to offer. Let's be a city that doesn't follow cities, but let's be a city that is a leader. Let's be a city that envisions growth in our community. As a community, we need tennis and pickleball courts. Thank you.
Does anyone else have any other comments? Yes, ma'am?
You don't have any prepared, but I promise I'll ramble. Well, I ramble to my seventh graders all day, so they would probably say, no, don't let her ramble. My name's Julie Kish, and my husband and I, Jim, we live at 5617 Daly Road, and I just am here to express our support for the tennis courts, pickleball courts. I spent 10 years in recreation in my first career over at City of Barberton. I was in charge of programming, of trying to find grants for parks, recreation activities such as this. So kudos to mayor and your staff working on getting grants for this. My family, we have four children in the school system, and we all go play tennis together. It's something that we can all do, even their dad, who is the smart engineer who isn't very athletic. He loves it, and it's one of the few exercises that he really gets into. I would just ask that you would really consider doing this, and I have seen the benefits of recreation. Like we said, we've got 90-year-olds playing with 9-year-olds. I have a 9-year-old that her dream is to be on the tennis team. Yeah, it's awesome. But the sad thing is, is that me working full-time now, I won't be able to drive her to practice, so that won't be a possibility. I have a son who is a freshman. He would love to play tennis on the high school team, but there is no high school team because we don't have the courts. I understand that the negative feedback on this has a lot to do with the trees that will be taken down. I think we really need to weigh the benefits. I think the benefits outweigh, you know, the negative effect of taking those trees down. The other thing is, is I help coach, and my kids are in the youth soccer program. Those fields that are back there, and if you ever driven and went through the parking lot to get there, well, there's only certain vehicles that I'm allowed to drive through those driveways and then get back there. Parking is terrible. The surface is terrible, so this would be a win-win for our youth programs, the soccer programs, as well as the tennis. You're going to draw more people into the soccer program for the kids because of having parking lots that are actually parking lots. So thank you for your time. Thank you all for your service. I know that it's a thankless job, but we are grateful for it, so I ask that you really take this in consideration and make this happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to come in?
It doesn't just have to be about...
You're allowed to ramble, right? If not, we're going to start with our first readings. Sorry, did I throw you? Sorry, then.
Resolution 22R-15, a resolution authorizing New Franklin to enter into a revised three-year agreement with Clinton Lawn Care for New Franklin Lawn Maintenance and declaring an emergency.
This resolution was assigned to community development. We move forward, adopt the 3rd, 7th, 3rd, 2nd.
Do you have a first and a second?
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Pederman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yeah.
Mr. Stopp?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Harget?
Yes.
Move, adopt 22R-15, 2nd.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Pederman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Stopp?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Harget?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. Kelly, if you would read our second resolution?
22-R-16, a resolution approving and adopting the 2022 Annual Operating Appropriation Budget for the General Fund and all other funds for the City of New Franklin and declaring an emergency.
This resolution is assigned to the Finance Committee, and we're going to ask for time on Resolution 22R-16.
Time is asked, and time is given. And Kelly, would you read Resolution 22R-12?
A resolution awarding a bid to Kavanaugh Building Corporation for the construction of tennis slash pickleball courts at Sisler Complex and declaring an emergency.
This is assigned to community development. We had plenty of discussion on it. Just a few things I want to just kind of, I wasn't aware. My appearance doesn't show that I'm conservative, but I am, and so I think, and I think for everyone, it wasn't about the need for the courts and all the money that holds. I didn't meet one person after one person who didn't want them. For me, it was a fiscal thing. After speaking with a lot of residents, I really can count on one knee, how many were just, no, you know, that one. I didn't really get a reason for them, surveying them, so, I mean, I represent a certain board in New Franklin, and so, you know, I have complete confidence in me forward with this. Does anyone else on council have anything else to add to it?
I can feel the same way. I think for the most part, most of us started, I think, whichever way we started, what our thoughts were, we're all in agreement now, I believe. But I think it's taken us a while to get there, thanks to all of you, because you've given us input and you've covered everything, and there are things that we're very upset about, the trees we're upset about. Those are memories, and those are things that you hold on to. But we're looking forward to doing something for the children, and really for the older people too, to bring them together. So you have to look at it both ways, in my opinion.
No, I agree with both what you're saying. I just want to praise the mayor for this, just that task we're unfolding with. We've been talking about this for several years. I've been behind it, and then I've been on both sides. I'm not a tennis player, I'm not a pickleball player. I think it's a great idea for the comments made about getting us folks together, and I support 100% of getting there. Thanks for just giving us all the good information and staying on top of it.
Well, and kudos to everybody here. Talked about someone that's been thoroughly vetted, and that's a really, really good thing. It's been discussed top to bottom, and all of the points of view are respected and appreciated. But I talked about this as being a legacy item. You know, we pave roads and we plow them, and, you know, we answer service calls, and, you know, you don't always end up with something tangible that you seek for that, but this is something that we're all going to be proud of. And council have a like to be really proud of this coming during your tenure. It's going to be done right, and it's going to be a big plus for the community, I think, even from a economic development side and from a revenue side. So I appreciate the dialogue and the consideration and council's support as well.
It has. When I came, and I knew I was going to say that for a little while longer, I was at a loss, you know, the amount of money, and we talked about it, it was a significant amount of money, and a lot of times, we would come to these meetings and there would be people here with solid arguments against, and the people who were here for it didn't live in New Franklin. And there's nothing wrong with that. They're welcome to come to the meeting and give their thoughts, but we didn't really get that public input. As we've gotten the public input, we've learned a lot, a whole lot, on many levels, and I really think this will add to the sense of community buy-in for this project, that we together put our thoughts together for this project. It makes me very happy.
I have to say, the public input that we've gotten is not just from a Facebook poll, or it's not just from a couple of emails. I mean, we've done a lot of work, I know myself, just speaking for myself, where we've reached out to people we know, we went to local businesses where customers are trying to have talk to them. We've done a lot of work on our end just to try to get a good feel, a good temperature to what the numbers were, and overwhelmingly, I would say, people that talked have supported
Anyone else? Well, then I move that we adopt 22R-12, 2nd.
Kelly?
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Stopp?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Harget?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Pederman?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. Now, we can think of a few, let me think, Damon. I'd say it's right up here. We've been together 18 years. That's the last time we'll say that. Now, our favorite part of our evening, the May was report, which is always nice and short.
Yeah, exactly. Hopefully, everybody received one of these, and so we're rolling out our Comprehensive Plan 2022. The document speaks for itself. We invite you to come to, go to the website. There's a nice website dedicated to it. The basic idea is to take a look and see where we are, what are our assets, what are our liabilities, what does the future hold, should there be development, or so, where should it be, and how should it go forward? And the bottom line being, this is, we want everybody involved in this. There'll be more extensive ways for some, we have more time, and, but just to characterize a couple, we have invited, we're going to create a steering committee. If you're interested in that, you can go online or come up here and get an application. Those would have to be in by next Friday. There will be a, the kickoff event will be a public visioning event, and we'll have that, we're looking at a couple of different places, have it at a public venue somewhere to really sort of gather people together, and that'll be the beginning of, hey, we want a different, you know, what do you like to see? What do you think we should do? What shouldn't we do? And that process will continue. It'll be about a year-long process. Another central part of that will be a community survey. We did this back in 2004 when we adopted the first plan, and, you know, there wasn't, nobody was really, we weren't doing much internet back then, so there was a mail-out and a mail-in, and the community really, we had about 30% response, which according to the people who do this talk about, that's not only a reliable response, but it's a big deal. We want to do a lot better than that this year, so that'll be an opportunity for people to weigh in in terms of pros and cons on this, and that'll follow with some steering committee meetings, and so there'll be a lot of opportunities to be involved. And culmination of this will be a plan going forward, something, a living document, that we'll have an implementation plan as well, how we go forward from there, and it'd be nice to work with. So we're off and running with that. Let me see, the Republic Contract was reported, they did a nice job of putting that together. Everybody's going to pay a little bit more. Haven't been raised for quite a while. I don't need to revisit all of it, it was approved last time around, but we're paying less than other communities are paying, we're paying less, significantly less if we had to go out and get our own service. One issue came up, and we're looking at it, and that's the bag service, and there was a pretty significant increase in the bag service, service, and we started putting the pen on the paper. So I'm talking with Republic to see if I can do something with that. That's an option. You got unlimited service, they're going to take everything, you can wash your room dryer and your mattress, and you got limited service where you just take your bin, and then there's a senior rate for the limited, and if you're not taking advantage of that, please do. And the bag rate, you can buy the bags and set the bags out, but we're working on that bag price, so we may have some revision on that. So that's it for Republic. I wanted to let council know that as far as the site clearing, we didn't get a proposal from Aloha Trees, and at this point, we're inclined to stay with Mr. Atlee, who gave us his first quote, to remove the trees and get them off the property, take them down and get them off the property, no charge to the city. Mr., the Aloha Trees quote required some upfront money, and then the idea that we would get X amount of dollars for the trees, $20,000, but then we have to pay the price to get the trees off the property, and it's just that the uncertainty of that makes me nervous, that, you know, what if they come down and they say it's not worth it? You know, what if they want more to haul them away? We have to put seven, eight grand upfront, and it's just a sticky wicket. We can just bring these folks in and they'll take the trees down. And sort of the puncher from our perspective is that the city, the schools are removing some trees as well, some of the property, adjoining the school property, and they want their trees down, and they're using Mr. Atlee, and they're already talking with them, and they've explained to him, the pro-call, how they come in, and when they want them there. So I just think it makes a whole lot more sense to have one person come in and do that, so that's our inclination at this point, would be to do the same. ARPA money, we got $740,000 or so, we've talked about that, and the bulk of that this year is going to be used for paving. We got another, somehow, some cities didn't claim all this, and so it came across my website that they reissued, and I said, great. And so I pulled it up, and I found New Franklin, and we're getting, I wish there were another zero or two of this. We're getting an additional $2,955,000. Stop rambling. So that'll be coming. And then that second tranche, they call it, will be coming later this year as well. All right, and then the last thing I was going to talk about was the polar bear jump, and some of you may have been out there, but man, what a huge success that was. If you've never seen it, go out next year. The park, the state park parking lot was full. There's music and there's tents, and they really run a nice show in advance, it's the African Pantan Regional Food Bank. Our Secretary of State, Frank LaRose, was the first guy in the water. And our safety forces were out there, a lot of volunteer time, and as I said, it raised over $100,000, so hats off to Kelly and Heather Parizo, put that together. They started doing off their own dock, and now it's just a major deal, so we congratulate them on that as well. That's all I got. I was afraid I'd do that.
I did, honey, but I have to thank you. It was fun, wasn't it? That's another thing we've done together. It is, it's funny. I'm not saying I do whatever year goes people, let me tell you. I just murder on the hair. My women always have to think about that. You guys know I'm looking great. But we women always have to worry about that. God is a man. And I understand Susan is ill tonight?
Yes, yes, she's been battling through, she dropped for a few, she came back in and kind of muscled through, but she's down again today.
I hope she feels better.
Thank you.
Is there any open business?
I don't know if it's open business, but I'm going to say it is because it already happened.
All right.
I want to revisit the clearing, so the two quotes, I see the one for Mr. Atlee doesn't say anything about doing it for free. It's, yeah, it's not the most sophisticated quote, but it's top line, we will harvest trees and firewood. We'll reduce this to further writing. The balance of those numbers were if we wanted additional services. Digging the stumps, digging smaller stumps, hauling stumps, et cetera, those were all additional services, which they would have done with Aloha as well, so. I just, I'm questioning, I'm just asking. No, no, good question. So the quote that I saw from Aloha was, there was a, from what I understood, a company
So the quote that I saw from Aloha was, there was a, from what I understood, a company would write a check to the city for twenty thousand, and then from that twenty thousand, we would have to write, give some money back for the services to be done, but at the end of it, when the dust settled, there was thirty-two hundred left on the table to the city.
Right, and the way it was written was that, we're going to give you twenty thousand, you're going to have to pay one thousand per board foot for trucking. We calculated forty-five hundred board feet, they don't think it's going to be more than four thousand. I don't know who the twenty thousand is coming from, it's whoever's riding this lumber, but it's not Aloha. And my understanding is that the trees would come down, and then we pay to ship them, and then they determine, yeah, we got twenty thousand dollars worth of trees. It's just, there's just so many ways it can go wrong, Mr. Fetterman, that was my concern. And really, not to demean Aloha, and we start by writing a check for eight thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars, and then we got to kind of chase our money, and hopefully at the end of the day, we make three thousand dollars, and for that three thousand dollars, it just, it doesn't seem worth it to take that chance.
Who else?
For old business, I just want to mention that there's been, at our last meeting, we had someone bring up about short-term rentals with Airbnb. We are continuing to work on that. We met last week, was it? Earlier, or last week?
Yep.
Going for things, we have another meeting set with our attorney and the committee, that's working on that, the Lawson Homes Committee.
Yep.
So the process is continuing. We're not, you know, sneaking it under here, so just wanted people to know.
Jim and I like to talk the most, and that was his nudging me, because I was supposed to say that. We got a lot of data together. There are people that are late-front properties that have some concerns, that there are people buying Airbnb, buying homes strictly to be Airbnb, so that's a little different than somebody just renting their room out or whatever. So we're in the exploratory process, and the mayor and previous councils have done quite a bit of work on this too. It's complex, so it's not going to happen right away, but we do want to talk about it in a meeting, because that helps get the word out. If somebody has a big concern, that's kind of an invite to come to the meeting and tell us your concern, share with us, again, so that we all can think.
So that would be new, old business. You ready to move this?
Yes, I talked to Brian a little bit before the meeting about some concerns with Vanderhoof Road. I know we've been putting that off due to the sewer project, but without a definite date on the sewer project, I'd like to see if we can get something out there sooner than later. I went out, drove it a few times, observed some of the people driving up and down the road. There's a large section of the road where people are actually going left of center to avoid it, with the speed of the road out there, and hitting the bunks, I mean, you're getting your tires off the ground, it's just not a safe situation as far as I'm concerned. I wonder if we can do some full-depth repairs out there, just on the one side, seems to be more on the south side than the north.
We included that in our, in the bid request, a bid for the south lanes of Vanderhoof from Rex Lake up to ninety-three, and that's, it's weird, and Brian can tell us, but I'm not going to ask him. I don't know why the south gets worse, some of the water goes that way or something, anyway. But it really, and if you drive it, you know, when you're heading west off of ninety-three, it's pretty good, it's decent road. They're coming back, good luck. They've done a lot of patching. We're not alone in that. You see that happen all over, by the way. We have probably the worst possible conditions this winter for pavement. So I expect that's going to be one of, part of the pavement project is that it will go with the, depending on the numbers, but you guys will prove it eventually, we asked to prove it, but we look at the south lane, and then hopefully, we can see what happens with the.
Yeah, I just thought that south lane needed some more permanent type attention. Thanks to the Service Department for being able to take it out and hole patch, which helped, but it's not a permanent repair, and I think we just need to do something out there. And also, Brian had mentioned that there is a list of roads potentially that we're going to look at addressing this year.
Right.
Could council look at?
Yeah, of course. Yeah, the bid, we're going out for bid, I don't know if, been talking with GPD about getting that bid out, and as soon as we do, well, we'll send you a copy of what we looked at.
Any other new business? Any comments from the public? Nothing?
Just an outstanding thank you.
Oh, thank you. Paul, is there a reason for an executive session?
There is none.
And I would like to ask one adjournment. Paul in motion. Aye. The next meeting is going to be at six P M. here in council chambers, March sixteenth. Thank you all for coming. I enjoyed it. Jim?